Okay, everybody, please rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God. Okay, join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father.
The Lord is in heaven.
How will be thy name.
Thy kingdom come. It will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Yeah, the next public workshop will be Tuesday, September 12th at 10:00 a.m. in this room. The next regular meeting will be Wednesday, September 13th at 10:30 a.m. also in this room. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated August 30th, 2023, and accept and approve the video recording of the August 30th, 2023 Commissioners' Regular Meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Last week's meeting in particular, there were.
I can't hear you, Commissioner. Can you please speak into the microphone?
Okay, last week, at last week's meeting in particular, there were people talking out of turn without saying their names, and I believe that that is required if they're going to be doing the minutes that way. Some people didn't even identify themselves. Was that addressed in the, in the minutes?
They can't hear you in the back, Commissioner, so that's not going to be addressed in the minutes either. You need to talk into the microphone.
Okay. It is addressed in the minutes. You don't just get to say that because someone in the back.
If, if they can't hear you, if, if people can't hear you and it's not picked up by the microphone, it's not, it's like it's never said.
I, I can't control the.
It's not just for the.
Call the roll.
For the recording. It's for our $60,000 recording system that we have. Please calm down. I, I just, I just address.
But the point is, is when people talk like that and it is not included in the record, it still is part of the meeting even though it's not being identified and it needs to be as such if you're going to take the, accept the audio.
Cheers and stuff from the crowd, I don't believe that are, is record of, of what we're doing.
Because that's what was going on.
Bruns and cheers and, and sounds.
It wasn't sounds, it was people actually talking.
Can we move on, please?
Yes, let's move forward with this. This is nonsense.
Okay, so I'm taking the vote again for item one. Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Okay, item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to transfer appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to adopt a resolution approving the list labeled as July 2023 Then and Now of Purchase Orders to the various vendors to be known as Then and Now Purchase Orders in compliance with O R C 5705.41D.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to remove from table item number eight Commissioners' Meeting Agenda dated August 9th, 2023, Volume 156, Page 25891, to adopt a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the, the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
A motion to remove from table.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight then is to adopt a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission on August 21st, 2023, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for the Trumbull County Calendar Year 2024.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to grant permission to the county engineer to close the roads listed.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 10 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits by the companies listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 11 is to accept and award the proposal submitted by Kohler Floor Coverings to install VCT flooring at the Trumbull County Family Court Center in the amount not to exceed $7,571.50 and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute any and all documents.
I'd like to see the request for the quotes. This has been something that I've been suggesting and asking for since I got here because our, our procurement policy requires us to obtain three quotes. And when I reviewed the ones that were given, some of them are, there's only two, and it shows different amounts of material, which means that they're not necessarily quoting the same things. I want to make sure that we're doing everything above board and that it appears as such to the public and for an audit. And if we're not getting three quotes or asking for them and there's no documentation of that, then we're not complying with our own procurement policy.
That has nothing to do with an audit, but we reached out to five other entities.
Where is the verification of that?
Have you asked Bill Hart for that verification?
Asked for it on a regular basis to be sent to us with the agenda information.
I can't help that you didn't receive it. I'm sorry.
You didn't receive it either.
We talked about it in a public meeting yesterday.
There's no written.
So you're calling Bill Hart a liar.
I'm saying that I've been, and I've discussed it with Bill Hart before and said, please, send out to the, those who you're asking via fax, email, or anything that just to show somewhere that you've tried to get a number of quotes. I don't see them. I only see two here, and there's nothing that shows these ones were contacted and this is what we requested. There's just quotes without.
Again, you're saying that he didn't reach out to five entities. I think you should take that up with Bill Hart.
There's not, it's not in writing. They pick up the phone, they call certain people. We don't know what they're telling them because they're clearly quoting different amounts, so.
I disagree. I disagree. And we've done our due diligence. We reached out to five different entities.
All right.
We went above and beyond. And it has nothing to do with an audit.
Procurement policy.
Let me get motion.
Nothing to do with the audit again.
Make a motion to approve this quote. Second.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because I don't know that we follow procurement policy, no.
Item number 12 is to accept and award the proposal submitted by Howland Company LLC to remove asbestos-type material from ductwork at, at the Trumbull County Records Center and Planning Commission in the amount not to exceed $9,850 and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute any and all documents.
I think that this one needs to be tabled because the quotes that they did give that you're getting ready to award wasn't even signed. So you can't, you can't give a, a, award to a vendor that didn't even sign their quote.
I have no idea what you're talking about. Make a motion to approve.
Wait a minute, I'll show you.
Make a motion to approve.
Here's their quote, and it says that this, that it says my, my, by my signing below, my signature signifies my written agreement to, of, with the above scope of work prices, specifications, and conditions governing the proposed project, and it, it says.
Fill that paper, everybody. This is an official paper from how, from this company here.
And it says.
So why would they draw this paper up?
Because it needs to be signed. I don't know why they sent.
It doesn't need to be signed. It does not need to be signed. It's a, it's a quote from that company.
And it, it says that they.
I don't know why we keep obstructing progress for, for things that are, things that are not bearing on progress.
What they do is, it's the same with a change order or anything. They sign something that says that it's, their price is going to be good for so many days. It's just, you don't, you wouldn't award anything to someone without the, the, someone with the authorization to sign it, signing it. The other company signed theirs because that's what they're supposed to do. So I just think that it's.
I know you think that, but we have two quotes from these companies.
Right, and I'm not going to hold up removing asbestos out of a county building where employees are working.
Why don't we, what, then if anything, why don't you go with the one where they actually signed their quote and are approving that they're going.
So you're saying they drew up this information on their letterhead and everything, and that's not what they want to do.
And then they're going to switch it out and pull some of the quick one on the county.
It's ridiculous.
Is that what you're implying?
I mean, I can't fix the fact that you have never conducted business like this before.
It is, it is analysis by paralysis. We, we, we just continue to get bogged down in this minutia that has nothing to do with progress. You have two quotes here.
Okay.
Two official quotes on their letterhead.
Not enough, okay. Not an official quote.
Then vote no, Commissioner. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number 13 is to approve change order number one with the Conti Corporation associated with the boiler and chiller replacement at the Trumbull County Family Court in the amount of $5,200 revising the total contract amount to $423,000. And under the note, change order number one is added on to provide labor and material to install Trumbull County-supplied shot feeders necessary to supply chemicals to the HVAC and cooling systems.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
I, this is a change order. It, the date of it is July 18th, and it said that the cost is good for 15 days. It's now September, so I called to find out about it, and one of them, the jobs has already been done. And we're supposed to approve change orders before the work is done. It's just like proceeding on a contract without, it's just like proceeding with a contract without the board's approval is if they proceed on a change order without the board's approval. And I, I'd like us to make sure, sure that we're doing things the right way. Are they verifying on the other ones that they're holding that price? Again, I'm just saying, it's obvious. It says July.
Did you ask him when you were on the phone with him?
I didn't speak to the representative here, but our, our department, that maintenance department should.
So you called there to ask about the quote, but you didn't ask him if the quote was still good.
We don't have anything before us that says that it is. So I called for clarification, and that's when I found out that the work had already been started. And I said.
Has it been started or done?
There are two different things on this change order. The first one of them has already been completed, and the second one has not been done yet. And we, I, I just made sure that when I was talking to that department that they knew that we need to get the change orders before the Board of Commissioners, before the work starts. I don't know why it was sitting here that long, so. It's the consultant or whoever's on the project. They just need to make sure that they're moving expeditious, expeditiously so that we can do things the right way. Backwards for them to do the work and then approve it afterwards, what we're supposed to do, primary job, so.
Actually, some, some change orders need to be done because especially you can't shut down the building. They can't wait for the approval of the Commissioners to get the change order approved. So if it's necessary, like it is in this case, it has to move forward. Unless you want us to shut the building down, shut the court down.
No, that's not what I said. It's just the, the process has to be correct.
Process has to be fluid as well, and we can't have interruption in service.
It wouldn't have interrupted anything to do it the right way.
Because you're an engineer and you know that. Can we please move on? I make a motion to approve.
An engineer, and you even know what you're voting on.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No, because of the process.
Item number 14 is to accept and award the proposal submitted by Schindler Elevator Corporation to install two new elevators and controls in the Trumbull County Administration Building in the amount of $729,250 and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute any and all documents necessary.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 15 is to rescind the journal action dated July 12th, 2023, Journal Volume 156, Page 25856, to authorize the sub-grant agreement G-2425-15-0162 between the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, the Trumbull County Workforce Development Board, and the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 16 is to authorize the modified sub-grant agreement G-2425-15-0162 between the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, Trumbull County Workforce Development Board, and the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 17 is to approve the amendments to the bylaws of the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County. On July, or on August 3rd, 2023, the Bylaws Committee met for its annual review of the Board bylaws. And I have the amendments listed.
Motion approved.
Second, motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
I just wanted to make some comments. So the Director of the Workforce Development, I just want to highlight the difference between some departments and others. Since I've been here, and when I try to get certain things done, oftentimes people who don't want to change things will find ways to continue doing things the old way, go to the other Commissioners and say, hey, we don't want to do what she was suggesting.
We stick to the agenda item, please.
And what Mr. Turner does, and I appreciate it. I've made a lot of suggestions over the past few years, and all, all of them you've, you've really taken and you've changed the way you do your board and the, the minute, I'm sorry, the modifications to the bylaws that when I was suggesting them, you've taken them, and there's more diversity on your board now because of your advertising. And I just want to thank you because it's obvious that not all departments actually take my suggestions, but you do, and I'm grateful for it because I think that you've done good things over there, and it's because you took the initiative to change things. Thank you.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 18 is to authorize the Board of Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for inmate food service management consulting services to provide product for meals, menu, and food preparation consulting for the Trumbull County Adult Justice Center.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 19 is to authorize the settlement agreement in the case of Express Underground Inc. versus Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Court of Common Plea Case Number 2023-CV-1084, and to authorize the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to execute the document.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No. If the, if the vendors did something that they were truly not supposed to have done because they weren't authorized to do it, then there should be no reason to settle with them.
Okay, item number 20 is to accept the change in job status of Maggie Powell from her full-time position as telecommunicator to part-time position as telecommunicator with the Trumbull County 911 Center effective September 2nd, 2023.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 21 is to accept the resignation of Samantha, Samantha Welker from her position as telecommunicator with the Trumbull County 911 Center effective August 30th, 2023.
Motion approved.
Second, and discussion. Just want to reiterate again, our need for telecommunications at 911, if anyone's listening, anyone's watching, of the people that are getting involved in county government. We're moving in a great direction with 911 under a new director. The, the employees that work there, many of them are burned out from years and years worth of overtime. And it's hard to train a new employee there. It takes about six months to get them up to speed. And in this situation, again, this is a new employee that we had time invested in, and then she resigned. Many times they, we get time invested, and they leave and go to other departments. So there is a staffing need at 911. We're looking for good employees that can work under high-stress situations that want the self-fulfillment of being able to help others on a daily basis. And I would encourage, if there's someone out there that meets those qualifications, they apply because we're moving in a great direction with our 911 center now, and we're in need to fill these positions.
Okay, Mr.
Yeah, and, and to add to that, I think that the training there needs to be improved. I mean, i- if you read the resignation letter, it's, it's, it almost like a good environment for, for training. I think that the new director needs to look at the process there and take heed and the feedback of those who leave. If, if not for an exit interview, a, a letter that's so detailed is what she wrote explaining the reason she wanted to leave. I think that, that would be useful to improve the process.
We've, we've got quite a few resignation letters or, or transfer letters that where people express their feelings in different departments, and we, we take them for what they're worth, but there's always two sides to every story too, and and we wish the best to all employees that decide to move on. If it's not for them, you know, we understand that. We are moving in a good direction in 911. I don't want to taint that in any way, shape, or form, and I am, I'm proud of the success we've made over the last couple of months.
If, if, if there's a continual problem with retention, sometimes you need to look inside, so.
Well, three years without a permanent director will cause a lot of stress, and three years of mandatory overtime in that department has, I feel for all the employees there, and I thank the ones that stayed for hanging on because without them, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the help for the safety services that we have, so. Those employees have been in a difficult situation for the last couple of years, and hopefully that's all behind us.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 22 is to request that the Board of Commissioners authorize the renewal of the citizens' participation policy for project year 2023. The citizens' participation policy is a required element of the county's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program. This policy takes effect on September 1st, 2023. The program year 2023 and extends through August 31st, 2024, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute any documents.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 23 is to update the Trumbull County Sanitary Sewer Rules and Regulations to show the new Ohio EPA-approved pretreatment local limits for the Mosquito Creek District and the Brookfield District as listed.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 24 is to adopt a resolution declaring the necessity of constructing the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project known as County Project Number 5-S-18 for the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District. And within the note, Thursday, October 12th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m., is hereby fixed as the time in the Yankee Lake Ballroom located at 1800 State Route 7, Brookfield, Ohio, 44403, as the place of the hearing.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 25 is to acknowledge the receipt of an executed warranty deed from the Board of Trustees of Warren Township to the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners for the transfer of property for the purpose of constructing a package wa- wastewater treatment plant to provide sanitary sewer treatment for over 700 properties in Warren Township as part of Trumbull County's Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project Number 29-S-97.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 26 is to adopt a resolution authorizing Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to nominate, apply for, accept, and enter into water pollution control loan fund agreements on behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of the listed projects.
Motion approved.
Second, motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, would you kindly read the project, just so that watching or listening could.
Brookfield Avenue Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Sterling Drive Package Wastewater Treatment Plant and Mecca Package Wastewater Treatment Plant Nutrient Reduction Project, Smith Stewart Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, State Line Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Pendleton Gilmer Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, South Hen Hyde Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, State Route 46 Saddle Brook Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, and Almonds Package Wastewater Treatment Plant Replacement Project.
Thank you.
I'd like to go on record as thanking Gary Newbrow as well and his department. This is what progress looks like. Look at all these, look at all these different projects. Gary, thank you. I know you worked very diligently on getting funding that it's not local funding, state and federal funding, and, and using all the loans we possibly can to, to make this as affordable for our customers as we can. Thank you for what you do. This is evidence of it today. Thank you.
Hey, I
I know. I, I, I mean to say the entire staff at sanitary.
Item number twenty seven is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the furnishing of all labor material and equipment necessary for and incidental to the renovation of an existing building for the roof replacement and asbestos removal for the Trumbull County Engineers Garage.
I, I'd like to ask if we could have a recess to obtain those and at least review them because even as of today, we don't have copies of anything this morning.
What are you talking about?
Um, the last two items.
The advertised for sealed bids?
I'd like to see them. I, I mean, yes, they were designed. I want to see what this, what the, what it looks like.
The advertisements you want to see what they look like or what do you want to see? We don't have any bids here. This is authoring us to go ahead and advertise for sealed bids.
Exactly. So I would like to see what the, what was quoted. A, a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was Strollo who did the design in order to put this out for bid. I'd like to see the work that's specked, you know, what the alternate bids they've determined, what they are. I want to review what's being put out to bid. I'm not, I'm not denying that it's necessary, but I just would like an opportunity to see what the
Why did you wait until now when we're in the middle of a meeting, when we're voting on the stuff?
I didn't wait until now. I asked about it yesterday and I asked about it again this morning, effective at four o'clock yesterday, four fifteen. We didn't have any of, any of that paperwork at the Commissioner's Office. So I thought maybe it would be here this morning for us and we don't have it. So it's not a matter of waiting until the last minutes. It's a matter of our employees not providing us with the things that I think that we need to review. So if Mr. Hart's anywhere in the building and has a copy of that, can you bring up three of them for the Commissioners? I mean, you were at the, y- yesterday you saw that there wasn't anything associated with it. Like to see the design and the alternate bids and how it's all put together.
Which alternate bids?
Yeah, which alternate bid? I don't understand when
Well, of course you don't. I'm not going to explain, but
We're advertising for sealed bids.
Exactly.
What alternate bids?
When you advertise for bids, you want, i- it relates to the um what's been specked out by the architect.
Right. That's not an alternate bid.
There is actually what they, when they put it out, it'll show you what they're, what you're bidding on.
You want to see the specs? You don't want to see bids? You got to be clear in the language you're using. You want to see the specs provided by the architect.
Which, which is what is going out to bid. So I would like to see the bid, what's being put out to bid and the specs. I have not seen anything. And I believe the Board of Commissioners should see these things.
And review the architecture, the architectural specs is what you're saying.
At the bid, h- how it's
I don't know what you're talking about alternative bids though. I, I still don't
Well, that's whenever um you can ask someone and find out.
Okay. That's one way to deflect.
Motion approved as written.
Second.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
O- only because I haven't had a chance or none of the, none of the board has had a chance to review any of this. No, it really needs done. I just want to be able to look and see what's being bid.
I'm not going to play architects up here.
No, we're, we're, we're not architects.
No, none of us up here is.
The roof's getting replaced and fixed. That's what we need to know.
That, that, that's all you need to know. Okay.
Correct. You're not an architect. You didn't spec it out. None of that. I don't know what you're going to look at. You have no degree in architecture or engineering.
The engineers estimate it is.
Be looking at it.
I shouldn't be looking at it?
What are you, what are you going to add to it when an architect's already done the drawings? What are you going to add to it?
I'd like to be able to see what I'm voting on. I, I'm different than you.
It's a new roof.
Okay. And there were problems
And again, progress. We need to move forward.
Yes. And we need to review what we're moving forward with too. I, it, there were problems over there.
Why can't you hire an architect if you're going to, if you're going to look at the specs? That's why we hire an architect. That's why we have professionals.
You just ha- have them and rubber stamp everything. I know.
No, we have to hire professionals because you're not capable of doing that. None of us are.
Okay.
That's why we hire them.
And then we review.
We review what?
Review what?
Nothing.
We already picked the architect. That's the one that we're, we're
You're going to review the architect's specs.
My mind is just blown right now.
Why, why do you want to spend time critiquing everybody else's work? Everybody's work.
Yes, Bill. Please, thank you.
There's, there's your answer.
And I just want to advertise for qualifications. I don't know how hard this is. Qualifications.
Do you have the
It's a, it's I have nothing except a agenda item to advertise for qualifications. Whoever wants to bid on the projects, send them in.
But is it designed yet?
No, nothing is. That's why we have qualifications.
A couple of weeks ago.
R F Qs.
What a closer.
Can I go back to where I was at?
Yes.
Did you not already send something to Strollo to design the roof?
No.
Isn't it?
No.
I thought it was a couple of weeks ago that you
No.
Okay.
I'm advertising for people to come and do these projects. That's all we're doing. So whoever wants to bid, send them in. Then we grade them like we would do anybody else.
Who's designed, has it been designed though?
No.
Engineered? Okay.
Nothing's been done.
Third time.
Can I go back to the courthouse?
No, actually, there's something else. If you could hang tight after we're done with this, or can I just address this now? Um, there's a, three times so far, there is an employee, a supervisor on afternoon.
Can we stick to the agenda?
No, I, I need to talk to
No.
Is this going to some
This has nothing to do with the agenda.
Negative session regarding personnel, business.
Countywide with this. He's on afternoon turn. He's not in the public's eye. He's cleaning buildings. Who's the bother?
Okay, so the, the issue is they're out there, please, please calm down. So there's uh people out there gathering garbage, taking garbage out of receptacles outside. You don't know what's in the garbage cans. And it's a safety issue. When you have shorts on and you're pulling out garbage from outside or even inside, people use drugs. There are all kinds of things that are out there. We don't want any, it's a liability. We have dress codes for a purpose. And if someone is carrying bags of garbage that are at the level of their legs and their legs are exposed, it's not a, it's not a safe thing to do.
Old County has dress codes. We could start with an officer too, if you want to go through dress codes. Trust me.
I'm saying for the safety of the employees and for to reducing risk, we need to make sure that people are dressed appropriately for the job that they're, they're doing.
I don't know what else to
So there is an appropriate dress for someone to carry a garbage bag to a garbage can.
There is a dress.
They need a hard hat for that.
See who's violating it. Well, I'll go through building to building. Now we're going to do about it because again, they're janitors. They're cleaning and there's nobody to see them. They're not in the public's eye and they're
Especially if they're on afternoon.
After hours.
After hours.
Walking in and out of government buildings downtown with undershirts on and wholly shredded cutoff shorts. It's, it's just not a professional
You showed up in a bathing suit with a cover up one day and worked in the office all night. You did.
Can I go back to the courthouse, please?
Yes.
And it, and the other thing is we have, we have um, when we have people who violate certain things and others who do as well and they don't get disciplined them, it creates some disparity that could cause the county liability as well.
Take the roll, please.
You're just letting some people, okay.
Item number twenty eight is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the furnishing of all labor material and equipment necessary for and incidental to the renovation of the Trumbull County Stone Building.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This has sealed bid, it doesn't say for quotes or request for um proposals. There's, I'm sorry, for qualifications. It's not a request for qualifications. It's, it's bids. Okay.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No. Like to see what's being put out.
Okay, item number twenty nine is to appoint Mr. Thomas Harwood as a member of the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board for the term commencing September seventh, twenty twenty three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Just today.
We've had his application for about three weeks now.
No, I just wondered when it was.
It was added at the board meeting yesterday.
Okay.
At, at our workshop.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
All right, that concludes our regular business uh for September seventh. Anybody in the room have anything for the good of the county, good of the public? Yes, sir, Mr. Lattell. Again, if you're called on, please come up to the microphone, state your name and who you represent or where you're from.
Thank you, Commissioners. Todd Lattell, Trumbull County Recorder. I just want to remind everybody, I was in a couple of weeks ago. We have our Good Deeds Trumbull Pro- Program that is tonight uh at Saint Demetrius Community Center. Uh, it's thirty-two twenty-three Atlantic Street, Northeast in Warren. It starts at six thirty P M. Again, the goal of this program uh is to give people the tools to take action now so that it will save your family time and money when someone passes away. It's a great program. We believe it's going to be some great information. Again, starts at six thirty tonight, Saint Demetrius Community Center. It's a free public service. Uh, three offices are involved in, in this, myself, Recorder's Office, Clerk of Court Karen Allen, Infinean Allen and Judge James Frederica in the probate court. We'd appreciate uh and love to see everybody there. We believe it's going to be some great information. Thank you.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
For people who aren't able to make it, say you have um a presentation, will you have that available online as like a, you know, a slideshow?
Ye- yes, we're, we're going to do a slideshow there. We're, we figured we'd try to do one or two of these and work the kinks out and then do like a YouTube or Facebook Live. Once, once we get to that point, we wanted to get through maybe one or two, just so it's a little smoother. Uh, and then, but yeah, we do plan to do that. So for people that could not actually make it.
Because then you'll hear questions that people have and be able to fine tune it. That's really good. I just, because I know that people have talked about that and not everyone can make it, but it's really good information. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Donald Spencer. I'm a Trumbull County resident. And I'm attending the meeting this morning concerning the continuation of the W R T A bus service in Trumbull County. Many of the Trumbull County residents depend on the W R T A bus service here in Trumbull County for the following reasons: transportation to doctor's appointments, shopping centers so they can get their groceries, and to work to provide for their families. Trumbull County residents also depend on this service for the following reasons. It is the only mode of transportation that they have, they can rely on because they don't have no family members that can provide the transportation for them. Or they are not able to drive due to medical conditions. And I'm one of the many Trumbull County residents that cannot drive that have relied on this W R T A bus service for two years. Okay, for transportation. In closing, I'm asking the Trumbull County Commissioners to reconsider and reverse their decision for the W R T A bus service to continue operating in Trumbull County. I would like to take a moment to thank all the Commissioners for their time and hearing what I had to say. And I do have a copy of my statement here I would like to give to the Commissioners. Now, do the Commissioners have any questions that I might be able to answer?
Sir, have you tried the transit system we have here from Senior Levy Services for sixty and older handicapped?
Well, I did just got, get approved through them, okay? But, you know, like I said, there's many, many Trumbull County residents that, you know, depend on this bus service that they are cutting out because they have, that's the only mode of transportation that they have.
I, I understand. I, I actually was last Friday out by the mall and I saw people leaving work waiting for the bus over where the Burger King is. People were off work, leaving. And then there are shoppers who were just finished shopping at the mall and they walked over and caught the bus. I saw another one go by with people in it. And I, i- it's heartbreaking to realize that people won't be able to get to work and to shop. And, and there's also something to be said for having the ability to just go on a bus as opposed to scheduling everything that you need to go to with the other services that are available. And um I think that it's go- going to be a devastating impact on our community. And I, I would like to make a motion uh from the floor to join W R T A as it was written by our Prosecutor's Office, the agenda item in twenty twenty one and uh allow the voters of Trumbull County to decide on it. That's my motion.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Again, Commissioner, I wish you would look at any other alternative other than trying to force W R T A seven million dollar tax on our citizens down our throats. There are other options. There are meetings being held. Commissioner Cantal Mesa, I went to one yesterday. I went to one yesterday, a different one. There are things being done. The earliest, the soonest that anything could be done, unfortunately, yeah, with W R T A would be December or now from what I heard yesterday, potentially July of next year. Um, so we got to do better than that. We got to come up with a different system that's going to fill the void now. And our ears are open for alternatives. Mike Salamone, last week after the meeting here, I went and met with the Mayor Lordstown to talk about the jobs in Lordstown and what we can do for those people. He made some good progress with that. So we are actively working on this every day. And we, we understand your situation, sir, and the situation of many other Trumbull County residents. And we are looking for not a Band-Aid, we're looking for a cure for this, something that's going to be a long-term solution. And something, we just don't want to throw money at something or build a bridge to some, to nowhere. We want to make sure that we have a system that works for as many people as we can at the best responsible cost of our taxpayers.
Okay, can I ask the Commissioners one last question? I know that the um federal grant that the Director of W R T A had applied for was denied. Is, would there be some other grant that Warren City has received could appropriate some of that money from that grant so the W R T A buses could continue operating?
So, so yesterday, let me, let me answer that a little bit. Uh, yesterday I met with the Mayor Warren, uh Dean Harris from W R T A, Mike Salamone, our Transit Administrator, myself. And we started brainstorming. There's no secret that the City of Warren accounts for a lot of the transportation needs. I mean, the, the lion's share of it in the county. So what we tried to do is come to some sort of agreement where we can uh look at a grant and Mike will talk about that a little bit here in a minute. But look at a grant where, you know, we can go at it together, City of Warren and, and Trumbull County. Um, uh, as far as local share of dollars that we can leverage to get other monies. Um, there is a possibility out there that we need to, to sort of uh delve deeper into. Uh, and Mike can talk about that a little bit. At the end of the day, I, I do believe we need some fixed routes. I, I agree with you. I don't think that joining W R T A meets all our needs, unfortunately. And I, I'm not willing to hand over I'm not willing to hand over seven million dollars to someone that's not meeting our needs. And just to give you an idea how much that is, we run the county's necessary services, mandated services with one percent of the general fund. We would ask the people for another quarter percent. That's a quarter of what we run all the county on.
Asking for anything. I think there's a gross misunderstanding relative to, to um transportation.
What are you asking for, Commissioner?
Thing is that
And please stop interrupting me.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa had the floor, Commissioner. You just stepped on him. Please, spread your respect and let him finish. You can speak next.
Okay.
So, so in my estimation, there are, there is a need for fixed routes. There is not a need to join W R T A. Joining W R T A, we had five routes currently with this, with the grant that we had. One route that we were paying two hundred thousand dollars, we weren't, thankfully, we weren't paying that. But the grant that we got through this, one route was carrying seventy pe- sev- not seventy people, I'm, I'm mistaken, seventy trips. So that could be eight people, seventy trips a month. We were paying two hundred thousand dollars for that, for that grant. We do need some fixed routes. We don't need eight of them. That's not going to, that's not going to be the best bang for our buck. What we need is a hybrid system that's going to have some fixed routes and some door-to-door service. That's what, in my estimation, what we need to augment our senior and disabled transportation that we already have. And that's what we're working on. Mike, can you get up and talk about that a little bit too, about the potential grant?
And I'll respond to. So there's a misunderstanding that Commissioners have that the services that were provided were all that would be able to happen with WRTA. When, when we were presented with the plan as a result of joining WRTA, it included on-demand services as well for everyone in Trumbull County. Every town, every corner of every township in Trumbull County would also receive services. And as well, if the county were to join, there was going to be a board in place where all of those routes would be determined by the board and with public participation. It would not just be those same routes, whether they're doing well or poor. We would, at that point, not us, but WRTA, with the input of the citizens and their board, would be able to determine what those routes would be and how to service Trumbull County best. It would not just include fixed, those same fixed routes. Those could be changed. There, there's a lot going out to Bizetta. There's so many modifications that would be able to made, to be made to the service. So what you've seen out there has been temporary, a temporary program. It's, and you asked this question, where's the funding? It's OTP money, and that is a discretionary grant that was given with the intention of Trumbull County joining. So it was to bridge the gap until the county would join. And since the county didn't join, the state was no longer going to fund a service.
So you're advocating to join, just so I'm clear?
The state was not going to fund if the county wasn't going to move in the direction of regionalizing transit. The other so much misinformation that's being spread about that, and, and the cost has, the cost that they're talking about and giving. They're acting like that's going to be money that the county is, is responsible for paying.
No, it's, it's money that the taxpayers are responsible for.
Wiping it on them. Wiping it on a guy in Champion, and a, and a woman in Kinsman, and someone in Mesopotamia. I'm not going to do that.
It would be, basically, we would be losing every opportunity to obtain fifty-three oh seven money, which is for the general public if we don't go through WRTA, because WRTA is the designated recipient for this area. Warren gave that up. Trumbull County is no longer able to receive those money, that money. So, and, and when they're talking about the plan that they're trying to put in place, this has been a couple of years that they knew that they weren't going to vote to join, and the plan should have already been established. The meetings with those other communities that were said to be taking place years ago. I remember Mike Salamone saying, you know, we're gonna, we're going a different direction because the board didn't want to join WRTA, even though he originally recommended it. Then he said, well, we'll do, I'll do what the board wants me to do and try to get other communities to join, and none of that has happened in two years, and now it's about to stop. So this is, this is a Band-Aid, and it, because there's been an awareness that the situation was leading to this for years now.
Have you looked at any other options besides WRTA, or is it WRTA or nothing, Commissioner? Why haven't we had a special meeting just on transportation and look at all the options? Why is it every week, WRTA, 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 WRTA?
I believe that the people should have the right to vote on that matter.
But you're advocating for joining WRTA. That's different than saying people should vote on the matter. You're saying that, that, that we need to join WRTA.
That's how it works.
And you want to pay for an election to do that?
Pay for an election.
Pay for a campaign. Who's going to pay for the campaign, WRTA?
That's not even how it works.
How's it going to work, Commissioner?
So what would happen is we would have to join WRTA and then WRTA.
Join WRTA or put it on the ballot?
No, you just said join, and then one minute you said put it on the ballot. You just said join first.
Let me explain it to the board.
You are the WRTA pro, so.
Pretending that you don't understand, but the first step that you have to do is the Board of Commissioners.
I work for the county, not WRTA.
So the Board of Commissioners would join WRTA, and then after that occurs, then WRTA would put then a levy out, and that would be up to them to put it on the ballot and then let the voters decide whether or not they want to fund it. If the voters decide not to fund it, then it would be moot. We joined.
Then what is your back?
And what is your plan after that? What is your plan?
Voters shoot it down. What's your plan then?
That is a good possibility.
Want your finger, all the voters are being bad?
Why not just do it and see, and it does?
Why force a tax onto people and say that we need it when we actually don't need seven million dollars?
You don't, it's not us. I know that you want to be able to mic, micromanage, control.
What are you talking about?
Because if we go to WRTA, there would be no more little, other businesses giving donation money.
What are you talking about?
To elected officials. I'm talking about, you know, Terry Thomas from Community Bus.
What kind, what kind of, what kind of money are you going to get from WRTA? You're obviously their biggest cheerleader.
I don't, I don't do anything for money. I do things because I believe it's the right thing to do and let the citizens decide. I don't operate like.
Is that why you beg people to come to your fundraiser? Stop, stop. Me too.
I'll submit this for the record, sir, and we thank you for your time. Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Tim, you have something?
Morning Commissioners, Tim Hanford, IT Director of Trumbull County. I have this iPad. I would like to give this back to Commissioner Frenchco.
Does it have a phone number?
Yes, it does. And, and, and emails, you've been notified that it has been turned on. It's been turned on for a couple of months now, so.
Phone number, will someone?
What's that? Yes. It was, it was probably sent in an email, so you, you should have that. Thank you.
I do need a a new cord. I still have the, I could use my phone. Because the cords don't last forever.
That, that's correct, Commissioner. You're going to have to get that through your office. All parts and pieces are, all computer equipment, all hardware is purchased through the office.
Anybody else have anything for the greater good of Trumbull County? Michael?
Thank you, Commissioners. Mike Salamone, Trumbull County Transit Director. First, I want to start with absolutely, last week, when myself, Murda, met with Commissioner Malloy. He had sent us out to Lordstown, the Lordstown Mayor. He gave us a phone number of an HR Director, and he gave it to Murda and myself. I found out today, I just talked to Murda right before this meeting, the HR Director did call Murda, so we're going to try, we're going to take it from here at this point. This is, what we think is at this point, there's eleven employees at this facility.
How many? How many?
What I, what I heard was eleven.
At Altium.
Altium. So that's who we're, again, I haven't talked to her. The call came to Murda. And that's fine, because Murda and I have been working together on this at this point. But Murda was going to find out, get ahold of her, and then get ahold of me, and then we'll find out from there what we can possibly do with those eleven employees. And taking it a step further, we did talk to Dave Merkin from Comfort Caravan. He might be able to provide some transportation for that if we can come up with a dollar amount, but until we find out how many employees, how many trips, I mean, we don't have a dollar amount, so we're beginning stages of this at this point, but at least we'll try moving on from there.
Great.
So that's where we're at. I wanted to update that. Regarding yesterday's meeting with Mr. Cantal Mesa, Dean Harris, myself, Mayor Franklin, we came up with a couple of alternatives. There's something I came, myself and Dean came up with. It is, I'm calling this a long shot, but it's a possibility. That is, WRTA did apply for this grant and did not get it. Now, the grant closes, this grant application closes Monday, September eleventh. I can apply for twenty-twenty-five, which would start July first of twenty-twenty-four for the grant. I've already started, I've actually already started filling the grant out. I would need the approval of this board, but I just don't need the approval of the board.
Is this a, is this a fifty-fifty grant or an eighty-twenty?
Okay, this would be an eighty-twenty grant. It's called capital cost of purchase transportation, so it's an eighty-twenty grant. What we discussed yesterday, and this number can change, but which we already know, there are five routes, costs about one million dollars, about two hundred thousand dollars a route. We could go for eight hundred thousand, or we could go for six hundred thousand. What we decided at yesterday's meeting, and with Dean Harris was there, to go possibly three routes, six hundred thousand, is to try for this grant. So in saying that, the grant amount would be four hundred and eighty thousand, the match would be a hundred and twenty thousand. So for me to move on with this grant, I can apply for this grant, but I need several things from the Commissioners, because there's attachments that have to go along with this. And we would have to get this done today. So and you, Commissioner, you've already done this. This is nothing new, okay? So the three things that we would need for me to do this grant, I would have to get a new certification insurances, I mean, the authorized, authorized resolution that was signed by the clerk. I would have to get a new certification for the that's, I apologize. First, I have to have authorized resolution, which we just talked about, and that would be signed by the clerk for, as of today's date. Then I would need application certificate. You would have to sign it today. You don't, you haven't seen the certificate, I'll be glad to give you the application before I sign, or when I send it, so you will see it, but you'd have to sign it today. And the third thing is the local match certificate, which you would have to sign today also, is under resolution. So those are the three things that I would need. If I can get those, the other things that I need for the.
Mike, just so everybody's clear, we're talking about a twenty percent local match.
Twenty percent local.
For eighty percent. So when we were talking with the mayor, and of course, he has to go to council. But there was a, a possibility that he would, we would try to entertain, you know, a sixty-forty split of the local match, where Warren and Trumbull County can work together and collaborate on this, as opposed to going in people's pockets and trying to get these three routes together. What do we need to have by this September eleventh deadline exactly? So the Commissioners know.
That's what I'm saying. Those three things right there, because the rest, the, the rest of the attachments that I have to have, one's the budget, which is what I put, I would put together, Diane put it together before, but I can do it. That's not a problem. Table of Organization I already have, local match, all the audit, which I put in, these are all things I put in the other one. So I've got the, I have all this stuff except for those three items, but have to go in there. And that's what we'd have to do. And we, I would have to have you sign it, and then I would continue on the application and take it.
Do you need a resolution from us right now, though, voted on, I would imagine, first and foremost?
Would. I actually took the resolutions that we did last time. Put them on paper for you.
What's the funding? Isn't it an OTP?
Now, see, that's going to be the problem. Because we're not a fifty-three oh seven, I can't apply for OTP too. Because we're not a rural, I can't apply for fifty-three eleven.
So this is fifty-three-ten again?
Like, there's so much federal money that would be available to us that we're missing out on by trying to piece things together, where if we, and that's one of the things that I'm concerned with, is if we were a part of regional transit, and all of that funding would be available for, what you just described. To it because of a variety of reasons.
Correct. So the question would be, where would the state get the money? Not saying they can't get the money, the question would just be where. That's what I'm saying. This is not a question that this is, yeah, we're definitely going to get it. It's a question, at least we try for it.
Well, I think, I think it's incumbent upon us to try for it and do our due diligence and submit the grant on time.
Right. Submit the grant on time. If I submit it on time and I'm not missing anything, then we have a chance. Whereas if I'm missing something, like a local match certificate, they could, and that's what, when I talked to them, they said, they could call me up and say, hey, where's your local, where's your local certificate?
But this would still not start until twenty-twenty-five.
This would not.
We're talking more.
Twenty-twenty-four.
My first to twenty-twenty-four is when it would start.
Okay.
Here, because we already knew that we weren't. Not because me, but.
Why wasn't?
Why wasn't this done last year, what you're proposing? Why wasn't it done last?
Because Dean, Dean applied for it. He got it last year. So the question to, here's my, no, wait, Commissioner Frenchco, one second, please. Here's my question, and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus here, okay? My question is this: if ODAT had a feeling they were not going to fund this one more year, which they, which we could know, why didn't ODAT come to us or come to Dean and say, this is your last year. You guys got to figure out how to fund it. They didn't. So it's, the ball has been dropped by more than one person here. Yes.
Why didn't you have a meeting with the mayor and Dean and fill this grant paperwork out? Mauro had the meeting yesterday with Mike.
Year ago, if they knew that they didn't.
Why didn't you have it a year ago?
But what was to be doing was looking at, I remember you wanted to look, the two other Commissioners, Frank and Mauro, were saying, go, they instructed you, go talk to the other communities to see if they could ship in the money so that we can go a different route. And that never happened. That was over, that was enough time to have applied for this.
You know, you, you guys, I really am kind of tired of the participating communities. I apologize. Participating communities is only fifty thousand dollars. That's chunk change for what we're talking here. And I'm not saying fifty thousand dollars doesn't help us, but I'm just saying fifty thousand dollars doesn't do us anything for what we're trying to do here. Okay, Commissioner Frenchco? Please stop bringing the participating communities. I am going to start working on the participating communities, finding out how many clients and rises they're taking, and go to them.
It just seems like.
But again, my, my original plan that I had was a three-year plan, in which I would have come to the Commissioners in twenty-twenty-four. What the snag was is ODAT did not fund this.
Known. It was well-known.
It was not well-known.
Yeah, it was known that they gave that as a bridge because they were under the impression that we were joining, and yeah.
Who gave the impression we were joining? I've never heard anyone say we're joining but you.
By Mike Salamone, before he was instructed to switch gears by the other two Commissioners. They, when they defunded the Transit Board and shut down and changed the designated recipient, I mean, the, everything happened was laying, was to lay the foundation for that, including changing the designated recipient to WRTA from Trumbull.
No, they didn't change.
In your mind, that's what was going on.
You might be saying that. No, they didn't change. WRTA has always been a fifty-three oh seven designated. What it was, the City of Warren was a fifty-three oh seven designated. They got rid of it.
Exactly.
They didn't change. Nothing changed. No, they didn't. They didn't give it to anybody. They gave it back to the federal government. That's what they did. Now, going back to what you keep saying about me, talking about joining WRTA, yes. That was part of the plan, but also at that time, nobody, nobody knew that it was a quarter of a percent to join.
Correct.
That's what the kicker was. No, it wasn't.
It's absolutely the revised code that whenever you, that the entire regional.
At the time we did this, Dean Harris did not know it. He got it from his lawyers. So at the time this happened, nobody knew it.
I'm sorry.
You could be sorry all you want. That's the bottom line.
You're the Transit Administrator. You should know something that's common knowledge that.
That's not common knowledge.
Every RTA, every area within it has the same amount of tax. That is common.
That's not true.
It's not.
That's not true. Property tax in some cases.
You could have a sales tax, somebody have a property tax, somebody have one percent, somebody have three quarters of a percent, somebody have a quarter of a percent. They're all different.
You can't just make a fact.
Cincinnati, I'm not Cincinnati, I'm sorry. Once. Cincinnati, I'm not Cincinnati, I'm sorry. Um Cleveland, I believe, is one percent. So if you wanna join, uh if, if one of the counties around there wanna join Cleveland, they gotta put up one percent. Do you think? Right, do you think they're gonna put up one percent?
It's gotta be the same amount under everyone in that.
But that didn't really come out till after the fact.
Common knowledge. I'm not gonna argue with someone about what common knowledge is, but.
Maybe your common knowledge, but not everybody else's.
Well, maybe that's what, maybe people.
So anyways, let's get back to this. If you want, I will.
You have written on here, Mike, you said fifty three ten, you have written up in here. Are you sure it's fifty three ten? I thought you just mentioned something about fifty three oh seven.
I apologize. It's probably because I just copied and pasted.
Can I do that, please?
Yes. Before we vote on it, make sure this is correct, Mike.
Yeah. So the first, what's the first one on the, um? Is that the resolution we're talking about?
Run it by the expert first to screen it.
Okay, she's good.
Can't do this. If anything, you're gonna have to get the application done and call a special meeting for next week, because.
I can't.
Can't. It's, it's Monday.
It's Monday, and if I send this in without these, they don't have to accept it.
Okay, so we can call a special meeting for Friday. To go over this and see your application, because no commissioner should vote on something contingent upon review. I cannot in good faith vote on something that doesn't even exist yet, and I didn't vote on it the last time for the same reason. So can we have a meeting?
That's not up to me.
You can get, you can get the application done, you can let us review it. And then have a special meeting on Friday to vote on it, and that will be the purpose of the special meeting, because this says. To vote on something that doesn't even exist yet, and I can't do that.
I, I understand that. That's not up to me. That's up to the commissioners to do that. And that's, and that's tomorrow.
We're, we're talking about a possibility to fund this and get some.
Do it on, let's do it once we have your application.
But the pro- here's the problem. Can you do a special meeting? You need twenty four hours. You don't have twenty four hours.
Have a meeting tomorrow.
You gotta advertise to the public. It's, right now it is eleven forty one.
Have to be for Friday afternoon.
Okay, I'm just saying, you could do it, but yes.
Our clerk is not available tomorrow either. She's got a previous engagement. I will be out of town tomorrow, so, but you two can have it.
Think it's incumbent on, on us to move quickly on this. This is a grant for potential for more funding. I don't know why we need to review anything. This is potential to get more money.
Done, so how can you vote on something that doesn't exist?
Cause we, we would just be committing the funds.
No, it doesn't say that. You didn't even read what, what we're voting on.
That's what I would make a motion for.
Okay. So can, you wanna help have a meeting after it's done tomorrow afternoon, so that we can actually review what we're voting on?
Well, now we got another problem there, too. The certificate has to be signed by. Clerk, not the certificate, the uh authorized resolution has to be signed by the clerk. There's only one clerk here. If she's not here tomorrow.
Sign it Monday.
Yeah, I get, you're, you're right. If she's here.
If it's postmarked by Monday or due by Monday.
Monday. She could sign it Monday then. You're right. So I just have to have everything signed and ready to go.
I would rather do that, because I wanna be able to see what we're voting on. You're voting on something that doesn't exist.
I know, please. I'm ready to proceed today.
I'm ready to proceed today, too. All we're doing is doing a resolution as recommended, but we know we're doing a resolution.
Grants all the time. There are grant applications that go out all the time.
It's not gonna be more than a hundred and some thousand dollars, you said, right?
No.
Hundred and eighty at the max?
No.
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, and that may be split with Warren?
It could be, it could be a split with Warren.
I suggested a sixty thirty split, that we would take sixty and, and.
About seventy fifty, seventy thousand, fifty thousand is what it would be.
And Warren could take on forty.
And if they do, if they don't, it's still, it's providing WRTA service, keeping three more routes, which is, sounds like what you wanted.
Or, I mean, another uh possibility right now is because he, again, Warren hasn't. Given us, I mean, they said possibly they could do this, but it's got, they've gotta get it, okay?
We can't wait on them to have a council meeting.
Right, they have to have a council meeting. So maybe the commissioners would just do the hundred and twenty thousand, and then you go get the money from Warren after the fact.
And this doesn't solve the problem, but it does.
Put us.
Solve a bit of the problem, starting next.
Solves a big part of it.
It solves a big part of it, and now we.
Last two routes that were being run were not very well traveled. I mean, there weren't a lot of people on them. The three routes were the ones that were.
It would solve a lot, and then it would give us time to um. Figure out where, what direction we wanna go in. Part of this application, I'm gonna be honest with you. Is, I'm gonna stay it in there, because it's a question, is this gonna be a permanent route? I'm stating that, yes, this is a permanent route. We're looking for a permanent solution. I'm, I'm, I'm being honest. I'm not, so that's what I'm putting in there.
For the people to use it, it will be a permanent solution, for the ones that just use that and just need to utilize that.
Cause that's what they're looking for. They, they want something that, there's commitment by. Local, and it's gonna be a permanent solution. Those are two, those are two things that are looking for.
Is the prosecutor's office on the phone, or anyone who could um advise the board on whether or not we should vote on something that doesn't. To approve something that doesn't exist?
It does exist.
We're just giving him the authority to proceed with the grant application.
Commissioner Frenchco, the very first pre- page. The very first page of this application is all the same as the other page. The second page is operating information, which talks about the type of service, service area. And how much it's costing. The cost, I said, is six hundred thousand. A um, it's an eighty twenty, that's four eighty.
Can I see it? If you have it and it exists, may I see it?
It's on, it's on my computer.
Commissioner, we're burning daylight. I mean, this guy could be leaving here now and going to start to work on this thing. We got a Monday deadline. You wanna solve, get rights for the people. This clearly solves, but let's do it.
In my computer. I don't have the dollar amounts, because I can't put any dollar amounts in until something's finalized.
You have a resolution ready to go, Mike?
Right here.
Yeah, yeah, the resolution's like.
Wanna make a motion?
Yeah, just, it's just, don't say the fifty three ten, if it's, if it's in there.
Wh- where are we at here? Number fourteen?
There's two fourteens, cause they were two different days.
Start at the top.
To authorize, uh make a motion to authorize the clerk of Board of County Commissioners to execute the twenty twenty five Ohio Department of Transportation Office authorizing resolution. For the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five.
Not fifty three ten grand.
Fifty three ten.
Okay, not fifty three ten grand, even though I.
Grant application.
Uh, grant application. Including the president of the board reviewing the authorized resolution prior to submission. A copy of authorization, authorizing resolution is attached here, too. Is that word? Yeah, I mean, we don't have that attached, but.
No, it's not a ta- I apologize. I thought I.
Okay, let me, let me re- rephrase the, the motion. Make a motion to authorize the clerk of the Board of County, uh Trumbull County Commissioners to execute the twenty twenty five Ohio Department of Transportation Office. Uh authorizing resolution for the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty five. Is there a second?
I'll leave that up to you, Commissioner. You're the, you've been here longer, and I haven't had any talks with WRTAs. I'll leave it to you to second it or not.
I said I will not vote on something that doesn't exist yet. We can come tomorrow and actually review it. I have no problem like giving him an opportunity to do what he needs to do, and then voting on it tomorrow, once it exists, and we get to review it. But I.
Let me ask you something. If the grant application is filled out and she reviews it afterwards and doesn't like it, can we, can we pull the application?
I can print it. It's gonna, I can print it. It's gonna come. I'm gonna explain this to you, Commissioner Frenchco. There's gonna be a lot on this application that's not filled out. The reason is, the way you, when you print it, the way the system is set up, when you print it, you print out the entire application. So it's like thirty pages. Okay, so you may be going through and saying, why is this filled out? Why isn't this filled out? It doesn't have to be. The only part that has to be filled out is the part I see in the computer.
Well, then I'd like to see that.
Well, I'm just saying, you're gonna see that, but you're gonna see a lot of other blank pages. Okay, and I'm, I'm explaining to you ahead of time.
How about, do you wanna take a break, a recess to give him the opportunity, because he said it exists, to go over and get it, and then bring it back to us?
Can you do that, Mike? I, I'd like to get this through.
I can print it out and bring it back.
Print it out.
Is it done? It's done.
It's not. It's ninety percent done. There's one area, no, don't put your hand over your head. There's one area.
Don't talk to me like that.
Oh, Commissioner.
All right, no more nonsense of this here. Morrow, you have a resolution. Read it one more time, Morrow, please.
To make a motion to authorize the clerk of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute the twenty twenty five Ohio Department of Transportation Office. Authorizing resolution for the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty five.
Second that motion.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco, because it's not completed and we haven't reviewed it.
We can always take it away if you don't like it. Let's, let's get the ball moving, is my point. There's people that do, that do need this.
Allow him time to do that or to meet again tomorrow.
I'm sure there's a second one on there, too. We gotta do all three, I believe.
Okay. The second one as well, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay. Also like to make a motion to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of County Commissioners. To sign the twenty twenty five Ohio Department of Transportation application certificate for the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty five.
Second the motion.
Mister Kate.
Well, it's talking about the fifty three grant, fifty three ten grant.
Sign the application that we don't. And it says, it says contingent of, on the board of Trumbull County. Reviewing it. Are we, are, do you want that read also? Want to read that it's contingent upon us reviewing it?
That you did last time.
No.
Our, our transportation director is reviewing.
The transportation.
These we'll sign on Monday, after you finish everything up.
That's fine.
You would have to change this.
I thought I already did. I thought that was the one that it was.
That's the follow on there.
Can I check, can I put your name there?
Yes.
That's part I didn't know.
Mike, it, it says contingent upon the board reviewing it. You don't want.
He didn't read that part.
That's not a part of it.
And I don't think he read that in his motion, so.
I didn't.
You can scratch that part off.
You added that after I had a concern.
Right, no, I did have.
Voting on something.
We did.
Or is there a third one, Commissioner?
Wait, we need to take the vote on.
Okay.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco. There's nothing that actually exists yet to sign. I, no.
Okay, and lastly, to uh make a motion to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners. To sign the twenty twenty five Ohio Department of Transportation Office local match certification for the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Does that exist?
The local ma- the local ma- yeah, the local match certificate does exist. I've got it in my folder. The question is, a hundred and twenty thousand, or do we wanna split that seventy fifty, or do we want a hundred and twenty thousand coming from here?
So you're sign, we're signing an approval for something without even having it done or the dollar amount sent?
No, we're not signing it. That's why I have, I have to go back and type this up, Commissioner.
But we're, we're approving something that, that's not.
I don't know what the dollar amount is. That's what you have to make, right. You, in other words, the total local match is a hundred and twenty thousand. Do the commissioners wanna put the whole hundred and twenty thousand in, or do we wanna do, or do you wanna do a split of some type between? Uh the city and here.
When you write the application, you can put that in, there's a split between the city and the county?
So the question is, what's the dollar? Do we wanna do seventy fifty?
I, I don't know if we wanna go that route. I don't wanna, I don't want this thing contingent on Warren council. If we're gonna do something for the citizens, over a hundred and twenty thousand, whether we pay sixty, forty, eighty, whatever it is. I'm not gonna wait on Warren and, and screw up this possibility of this grant by waiting on Warren. I would say we do the one twenty. And then we could deal with Warren later if they wanna kick in on it. Let their, let their council do that.
Be allowed to just. Give money to Trumbull County via uh ordinance. Like that, unless there is an authority for them. Remit the funds. The auditor understands that, I'm sure. It, it's not like Warren can just say, okay, well, we're just making a resolution to give them money without, without having a. You can't go back and just ask for that after the fact.
Well, I'm not gonna hold this application up any further. I mean, we got a deadline. Here's a chance to throw a lifeboat to the people that need WRTA or, or. And, and I don't wanna hold that up in any way. I'm not gonna.
Let you use local money and not go into people's pockets.
This guy needs to get to work. This guy needs to get to the grocery store.
Local money, correct. As opposed to going out for tax. As opposed to putting a tax on the ballot, yes. We're gonna tighten our belts in other ways, and we're gonna pay for it ourselves. As opposed to going to people and saying, we need more money.
We wouldn't be doing that, but.
You are doing that. You're advocating for that.
Okay, so we all voted up?
Yes.
No, I need to take the vote for the last one. Uh Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco. Because it doesn't exist.
Okay, just, was, one last thing. Um. The guards to WRT stopping tomorrow. I've only had several phone calls. I haven't had a lot. I did get one this morning. Forty-five-year-old young lady going to school. I've got her name and phone number. If we can maybe take care of her some down, down the road, I said, I'll get back to you at that point.
Sure.
Another gentleman called me. Um, he needs to go to work at twelve o'clock in the evening.
Mike, this is what you need to do, too. This is what we need to do, was fill these gaps. We have the local match to do it. We don't have to go out for a tax. To fill in some of these gaps. We can do it our own. So, so we need to, come, come to us with those recommendations, and the board will have no problem accommodating that.
Right, so right now, those are the only two calls I've gotten. Mister Spencer was to talk today. I'm not sure what day you sent your application, but you sent the application. He's, he's already in our system, so the senior disabled, we'll start him. I believe there were like three or four others, but that's all we've actually received from the WRTA. It's not like we've received thirty or forty applications, or thirty or forty calls. I just.
I agree. I haven't.
Not saying we won't next week. And I'm gonna leave, I have to, I will go take care of the two things, put a hundred and twenty thousand on here, and the other part of the resolution, that will either be signed today.
Yeah, I received some concerns from agencies as well. Um, one of them being the hospital. Um, they discharge people all the time at uh Trumbull Memorial Hospital to. Right, taking transportation to get home, and there are concerns about discharge.
Correct, and I, Commissioner, I'm actually uh have a lot of contacts with different um nursing homes and things. Um, they already have our senior and disabled application. I get them all the time.
And we are transitioning a lot of those rides that, that are sixty and over, and that are disabled to our other transit system.
Or in and out of the hospital are not sixty-five and old, older, or not sort of.
A lot of them are.
And, and this many of them can actually take a bus that's gonna take them to their house, or take them anywhere, wherever they need to go anyway.
From the hospital, going someplace, they're disabled at that point. It's a short-term disability. That does count.
So who are you ta- are you working with um all of the floors at the hospital to?
I'm not, I'm not, I've just, I know, uh I'm not sure about the hospital. I think they might have called me, but I do know Shepherd of the Valley. Has called me because they're, they're saying.
Know that there are concerns about the hospital.
Okay.
So when you have real concerns, bring the names.
Bring names.
Up here and we'll, we'll deal with it.
Just an influx of people who are in and out of the hospital, namely on the fourth floor, where there's psychiatry. And there, th- those are people who.
Okay.
Need.
Okay.
Discharge.
On the, on the disabled application, there's three areas, developmental psychology and a third one.
Are you reaching out to the hospitals?
I don't have, no, it's not up time.
It's on his job to do that.
It's up to them to contact me, and I will give them the application.
Just forward the number when they contact you over to Mike Solomon.
If, if you're getting phone calls, have them call me, and I'll take care of the application, but I can't take care of something I don't know about.
We might wanna reach out to April Caraway, too.
You give me her phone number, I'll be glad to.
You can get it. She's a, she's a.
You give it to me. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything from the room? Okay, anybody on the phone? Hit star six and unmute yourself? Star six?
Hello?
Hello. Name and where you're from, please?
Darling Tuda, um, are you guys aware, because this was said before? I don't know why Frenchco don't remember this, but on WRTA, their board. Consists mostly of Youngstown people. So if they decide to change on something, we're screwed. Because Trumbull County doesn't have the say that Youngstown has.
You're right, Mrs. Tuda. They actually have a majority of the board members.
Exactly, exactly. So we're screwed if they decide to change stuff. She needs to tell the people in Trumbull County that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Star six, to unmute yourself. Last call, star six.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Thank you all.